Right. Okay.
City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Spirit, as we gather here tonight, bless everyone with your Holy Spirit.
Give us your wisdom and your guidance as we deal with the issues that face our wonderful city. Allow us to perform our duties in an atmosphere of cooperation and understanding between, for our community. We ask all of us, all of this, in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of July the 7th, 2021 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, as amended, now therefore be it resolved. The City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that through the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such business, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
A motion is in order. What's the pleasure of council? Councilman Goldberg?
Move for approval.
Go to motion, Councilman Goldberg, and Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second by Councilman Williams. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Please prepare to vote. Members of council, please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next item will be approval of the minutes from the January 4th, 2021 special meeting. A motion is in order. What's the pleasure of council? Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Councilman Johnson?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have one special presentation this morning, which is a, this evening, which is a proclamation in recognition of Parks and Recreation Month. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. At this time, I'd like to call the Director of Parks and Recreation to the podium, Mr. Mark Furlough, to receive the proclamation and make a few comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name is Mark Furlough. I'm Director of Parks and Recreation. July is Parks and Recreation Month. The theme this year is telling your Parks and Recreation story. Citizens are encouraged to tell their own Parks and Rec story on social media this year, this, this month, using the hashtag #OurParksAndRecStory. We'll also be posting 31 things to do in Suffolk Parks and Recreation Centers this month, one for each day of the month of July. We're also encouraging citizens to create a Parks and Recreation Community poem with nationally known poet Kwame Alexander, and you'll be able to share your poem tomorrow night at the art gallery during their Poetry, Prose, and Pizza event. And finally, we'll be hosting our Flick and Float movie at Cypress Park Pool on July 24th at 7:30. We'll be showing Raya the Dragon. Bring your float and your, I'm pretty sure popcorn's not allowed in the pool, but maybe you can eat it on the deck. So.
Madam Clerk, please read the proclamations.
Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Suffolk, and whereas the services and activities provided by parks and recreation professionals are critical to building and maintaining excellent physical, emotional, and mental health of all residents, and whereas parks and recreation programs boost a locality's economic prosperity through the expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of businesses, and whereas parks and recreation, excuse me, whereas parks and natural recreation areas provide, improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, and produce habitats for wildlife, and whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the City of Suffolk recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim July 2021 as Parks and Recreation Month, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens and witness wherever I have heretofore set my hand, and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this 7th day of July in the year of our Lord 2021.
At this time, we'll consider removal of items from the consent agenda and the adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of city council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. If there are any items that members of city council wish to remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. If not, then a motion to adopt the entire agenda as presented would be appropriate at this time. Councilman Williams?
So move.
Councilman Fawcett?
Motion.
We have a first by council, a motion by Councilman Williams, and a second by Councilman Fawcett. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time?
Yes, Mayor Dooman. Pamela Brandy, 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Consent Agenda Items 7, 8, and 9. Ms. Brandy, are you present? The next agenda speaker is Carolyn White, 4216 Coal Train Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Consent Agenda Item Number 7. That concludes all the agenda speakers that are registered for this evening, Mayor Dooman.
All righty. If there are no questions about the items, a motion is in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. What's the pleasure of council?
Excuse me, Mayor Dooman, would you like me to present those titles?
What did I do? Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Going, just trying to speed up the process here.
No problem.
Mr. Manager. Really speeding up. Yes, Madam Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Item number 7, in ordinance to authorize the transfer of state funds from the Portsmouth Boulevard Sidewalk Phase 2 project to the Portsmouth Boulevard Sidewalk Phase 1 and 3 projects. Item number 8, in ordinance to authorize the transfer of funds from the Transit Fund to the Capital Projects Fund to advance the Transit Operations Facility Capital Project, and Item Number 9, in ordinance to accept and appropriate additional funds from the Federal Transit Administration for the city's public transit service.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Item 7 is an ordinance to transfer funding in amount of $103,780 out of the Portsmouth Boulevard Sidewalk Phase 2 project, with $51,061 being transferred into the Portsmouth Boulevard Sidewalk Phase 1 project, and the remaining $52,719 being transferred into the Portsmouth Boulevard Sidewalk 3 project. Basically, what we have is the three different projects, and we're leveling the funding out to make sure each one is sufficient. Item 8 is an ordinance to transfer funding in the amount of $600,000 from the Transit Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. This funding, along with recent addition of $2.6 million in federal American Rescue Plan Act transportation or transit funding, will accelerate the design of the proposed transit operations facility within the FY22, as identified within the FY2231CIP. Item 9 accepts and appropriates $44,809 in federal funding from the Federal Transit Administration into the city's FY22 Transit System Fund. This funding is an additional to what was previously anticipated, and of course, there's no local match as required on this appropriation.
Okay, if there are no questions about the items, a motion is in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. A motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Approve as submitted.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Second motion.
We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have one public hearing this evening. We have an ordinance to authorize a quitclaim deed between the City of Suffolk and Birdco Energy Incorporated in reference to an abandoned water distribution system, public utility easement located on tax map and parcel 34G 29 parentheses A asterisk 1 asterisk 2. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five-minute period for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
You want to do the overview of it?
What happened?
Let Stafford work first. Call Paul to the podium.
Mr. Retell?
Reading it off the script. Don't kill me tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. As the manager noted, this is, item is to convene a public hearing in reference to the vacating of a public utility easement on tax map and parcel 34G 29A star 1 and star 2. This parcel is located south of the Madison Street Southern right-of-way line. The easement contains a city-owned water main and fire hydrant, which is no longer in use by the city. It's our understanding that the property owner plans to develop this property, at which time fire service would be reestablished as part of the development process. The slide, excuse me.
Today, tonight's just not going. There we go. This is the actual plaque, and as usual, sometimes they're very unreadable. The easement is roughly at the intersection of Madison Avenue and Walnut Street, so since it's unreadable, we'll go to this next slide. The easement is actually within that red polygon that we've drawn in there, again, at the intersection of Madison and Walnut Street. There's a section of water main that extends about 400 feet back into the property to a fire hydrant. That's the easement that would be abandoned. As such, city staff have no objections to the city's quitclaiming and vacating its interest in the utility easement and associated water distribution system main. I'll stand by for questions after the public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good morning, council members. I mean, good, I'm sorry. Good afternoon, city council members and mayor. My name's Whit Harper. I'm coming from Saunders and Ojeda on West Washington Street here, and I'm coming on behalf of Birdco Energy Incorporated. This was an old easement. That was initially the City of Portsmouth. That was then through a devolution agreement given to the City of Suffolk. My understanding is, and I'm glad y'all didn't let me cut in front of Mr. Retell because he summed it up better than I could, but that, that it's no longer in use by the city, and we would just ask that you follow the commission's recommendation. Thank you much.
Do we have any other speakers to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance? We have one to speak in opposition. Hearing none. This public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion is in order. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Goldberg?
I move for approval, Mayor.
And Councilman Fawcett?
Second the motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Goldberg and a second by Councilman Fawcett. Any discussion of the motion? Councilman Williams?
Yes, Mayor. Actually, I have a question. You know, I'm in favor of approving this request, but my question is, in the past, we've had citizens that had been taking care of city-owned properties and have contacted the city to maybe get a quitclaim deed on their properties, on that particular piece of property, which is, which has been adjacent to their own properties. My question is, what's the procedure? Is the procedure for whenever there's an abandonment of city-owned property, can it be quitclaim-deeded to the adjacent property owners, or do it have to be put out for bid? Because the people that I'm referring to was told that this property would have to be placed and put out for bid and could not be given to them in a quitclaim deed format.
Mr. Manager?
I may request a little assistance from the city attorney if I could on the proper procedures.
The procedures depend on what type of property it is. So this one is an easement. So the city doesn't actually own the land. It has an easement to have this pipe in place. The owner of the property is, is Birdco. They, so they own the property. If it is a city road, there's another process for that. So it kind of depends on what the parcel property is as to what the process would be. So that's why this one is a quitclaim deed is because this is an easement. We, the city doesn't actually own the property, but the city no longer needs to use that easement, and so they're transferring their rights back to the property owner.
Any other question, any other questions or comments? If not, we have a motion and a second. Council members, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no resolutions this evening and no staff reports. We do have several motions. Our first motion is to schedule a. Thought we just did it. Trying to get through it. I had, I, I made a bet with somebody this meeting would be over by 6:45, and I don't like to lose a bet. I'll tell you that. All right, we got one more, and it's, an ordinance approving a reclassification in the fiscal year 2021, 2022, City Classification and Compensation Plan. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Mayor, Vice Member, members of council, the deputy city manager position and the chief of staff position resides within the city manager's office. Both positions are responsible of various departments that report directly to them. Both positions also report directly to the city manager. And based on the similar activities of these two positions, it is recommended by myself to reclassify the chief of staff and also, and retitle it as a deputy city manager position. It's not adding any new FTEs to the department, but balancing out the titles and the workload as we have in our office.
Okay, thank you. We have an ordinance being presented for council's consideration. Any questions or comments? If not, a motion would be in order. Vice Mayor Bennett?
I move for approval.
Councilman Ward?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council members, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Vice Mayor Bennett, can you please cast your vote? Thank you. The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay. Yes, Councilman.
I have one question for the city manager. What is the initiation for making, Mr. Felder, the, is there initiation that he has to go through to do this or anything?
No, sir.
No, no, no initiation, anything. I was just checking before you had these.
Councilman Ward, did you want to speak?
No, no, I'm, I'm.
Hitting the buttons. This might be a meeting for the books here tonight, am I sure? We still do not have any resolutions, and we still do not have any staff reports. Am I okay there, Mr. Manager? Thank you, sir. Okay, we now have a motion to schedule a public hearing, go on July 21st, 2021, regarding an amendment to the fiscal year 2021, 2022, operating in capital budget to accept and appropriate American Rescue Plan Act funding. A motion would be in order. What is the pleasure of city council? Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
And Councilman Williams?
Second.
We have a first, second. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing for the August 18th, 2021 city council meeting regarding authorizing the issuance and sale of General Obligation Public Improvement Bonds Series 2021. A motion is in order. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Goldberg?
Move for approval, Mayor.
Councilman Ward?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion of the motion? If not, council members, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on July 21st, 2021, to receive public comment on ordinances to enter into new ground lease agreements for the .67 acre Corporate Hangar 2 parcel, the .49 acre Corporate Hangar 3 parcel, and the .25 acre Corporate Hangar 4 parcel at the Suffolk Executive Airport. A motion is in order. Councilman Fawcett? And Vice Mayor Bennett?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Do we have any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on July 21st, 2021, to receive public comment on changes to the transit routes per the Transit Master Plan. A motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
And Vice Mayor Bennett?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to cancel the August 4th, 2021 city council meeting. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Councilman Goldberg?
Second, Mayor.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our last motion is a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, July 21st, 2021, at 4:00 PM unless canceled, and a motion is in order. Councilman Johnson?
Move.
And Councilperson Shelley Butler of Arlo?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this? Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
Yes, Mayor Doeman, there are speakers registered under this portion of the agenda this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government and shall be permitted five minutes for presenting the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Pamela Brandy, 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia, representing the Pewsville Civic League Regarding Chucka Tuck Oakland and Pewsville Infrastructure. Our next speaker this evening is Carolyn White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League Regarding Pewsville Timeline.
I'm gonna do a 20-year timeline and I'm gonna be jumping about. I got it in order if anybody wanted a copy, but I'm gonna jump about because it is over five minutes and seem like I get sit down every time it's over five minutes. Okay, I'm gonna start in 2021. May 5th, the last council meeting that they had, on May 5th, councilman asked Robert Lewis questions regarding the drainage and if the developers are doing anything to help with the drainage, since so many houses are being built in the area and the community already have flooding and no drainage. Mr. Lewis stated no, that they were not helping, but they were keeping the water off their properties and not putting it on the neighbors. Well, Mr. Robert, my answer to that is, first of all, only God Himself can keep water in one spot. Okay? I also spoke with the developer, Casa Investments LLC, who is now currently purchased the land, built two homes over the master drainage plan. He said he got permits from the city that allowed him to build over the master drainage ditch with the pipes that he used, the pictures that I sent you all. I got a letter, an email from Luke Dryly, I hadn't met him, said that Casa Investments were using the MS-19 pipes. I spoke with Mr. Duvan Spike, who is Casa Development Person, and he said, he sent me his floor plans, I have a copy of that if anybody wanted, the type of pipes that he used, and he stated that whoever told me that surely doesn't know what they're talking about, anything just to appease the community. Okay, going back to the beginning, January 2001, community planning, Gary Jones told councilmen the status of the park and that it was okay from the core engineers to get started on the park. March 16th, 2001, a letter came from council stating, there's nothing we can do about the wetlands in the park. On June 20th, 2001, there was a city council meeting, a letter was sent to Pewsville Civic League on August 5th, 2001, and paragraph two states, "As you are no doubt aware, the city of Suffolk is divided into taxing districts between which the real estate tax rate and the levels of the city's services vary. Pewsville is in the Nansenment taxing district in which the rate is lowest. Unfortunately for us, in this situation, one of the services affected by this low rate is storm water management. Other than that, however, the city does not provide storm water management services in the Nansenment taxing district outside of those recorded drainage easements which the city is required by state law to accept. We have no record of any such city easements that could be involved in a solution to the problems that are of concern to you." And as I stated last time, we were asked to pay storm water fees when we never had storm water. We've been paying it since 2006. Ongoing, in June 2008, Suburb Homes LLC, a home was built on Donald Avenue by Sam Brownwell. He was going to build more homes until the city required him to put all wires and lines underground. Well, we haven't seen any underground anything in Pewsville since the new development had. There's never been any. Matter of fact, instead of going underground, we now have septic sewers called Mount Topical Sewers, which have been placed in Pewsville that is on top of the ground. So nothing has gone underground. In January 2013, Pewsville received two more councilmen. They all stated they cannot come to our meetings at the same time, so only one councilman started attending our meetings until, on Pewsville Road, we requested councilman to come, the other councilman to come, who knew about the new development Wild Woods Community on Pewsville Road. And he has now sold over to somebody else and five houses are up there. He put in the drainage, he put in his own walkways, he put in a retention pond. That's all we got. Okay. So, March 26th, 2013, Pewsville drainage costs were estimated by Suffolk and the BMP locations, they said, were unknown. So they made some adjustments or whatever. April 7th, 2014, letter approved for $80,000 was taken from Pewsville CIP for the drainage study. The study was completed in 2012 and the city could begin a systematic drainage for deficiencies in the community. That didn't happen.
That concludes the time allocated for the speaker, Mayor.
Thank you, dear.
Next speaker is Wayne White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League Regarding Pewsville Infrastructure.
Good afternoon. Finally met the face of an email sent back on 11/14/19 regarding the total figure of the CIP for the Pewsville drainage. There is supposed to be a balance, as nothing has been done since 2018. Four culverts were put in where there should have been five. The estimate proposal for 2005, 2008, 2013, from your engineers listed five. They omitted Clifton Street culprit with the broken pipes. Also, Sandy Rogers sent an email dated February 2nd, 2018, regarding the condition of the master drainage project in Pewsville, stating that it would continue Phase 2 and the work should be completed in 12 months. Never happened. And don't forget the monies you placed in the CIP, May 5th, 2021, at a council session, with the American Rescue Plan funding and the CIP bias. We should have enough to get started. We are in hurricane season, there's a storm approaching. We continue to pay storm water fees and have never had any storm water drainage. This can't go on. All the building of new homes causing flooding and deterioration of the land must be stopped. If you can't stop the developers, then stop storm water fees. Don't think we're gonna stop in any way until we see pipes in the ditches and sidewalks on our main street. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kelly Hangler, 9345 Eclipse Drive, representing the Crittington Eclipse Hobson Heritage Civic League Regarding Community Partnership.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. And we have so many good news reports that I just wanna just say, good news, good news, and a good news. Honestly, a big thanks from the community and to everyone, from the police department, Parks and Rec. This month really knocked it out of the park to start off July, for 4th of July. I'm gonna thank everyone in Suffolk that came forward. We had people saying that they were coming from outside, that came from Pewsville, that came driver downtown Suffolk everywhere with very little announcement. But mostly Parks and Rec did some heavy lifting for us and we thank you because we didn't even know a permit was available and the church is the one who does this. So they were able to be involved, all churches were able, and all organizations. So, I mean, that's a lot. So thank you. And to the police department and the fire department, so I could take up the whole five minutes here. All right? But thank you. Also to everyone who came out to the Juneteenth in Pewsville. Thank you to everyone who came out to the town hall meeting and for the Chucka Tuck Borough. So this is a lot of activities to be giving thanks for. And this is what we mean by community partnership. There's quite a bit of things that we have, and we did watch the working session. All of the civic leagues that were there, there was five civic leagues and 120 people at our town hall meeting, okay? And we think that a lot of that could have been ameliorated. We know that you're trying to fix Mr. Moore, and thank you once again for taking the permanent position. But we're behind. We're behind because of COVID in our communities and we're also behind because we're behind. So basically what I mean by that is, we really need breakouts, okay? We need breakouts in information versus people trying to come for information once they're in crises. We did, again, watch the working session. We thank you for the money that's committed to the city of Suffolk, the $30 million, and to those drainage products. But that also is going to not yet have a conversation with the communities and understanding how, in particular Oakland, I'm standing at Ms. Lorna Turner's ditch that she's hand shoveling herself and has been for a very long time. She's 65 years old, she lives on Everett's Road, and she does that because of her neighbor and herself receiving the floodwaters coming down Everett Road. So those type of immediate things, we're easy peasy to get to, to be able to discuss those with the communities so they can see those things coming as well. I mean, there's a wonderful moment where you can feel a sense of relief when you know what a timeline is. We don't leave our private lives without timelines, okay? To build on success, we need those somewhat of a timeline, not a promise anybody's going to scream about, right? But a timeline, because right now we are facing Elsa coming in, and I went out to be able to check with her to see if there's anything else we could do, and she has herself hand shoveled out her drive, hand shoveled out where the road is chipping off because the dump trucks, okay, are coming past each other and rolling onto the side of the road, there's no shoulder, and crushing the side of the road and worsening what's going on inside of her ditch, so she now has to remove pavement on top of everything else, okay? Out of the ditch, to clear the ditch. I think I made that point. So moving on, what is happening in Hobson, what is happening in the communities? We have a lot of back, we have a lot of sweat equity. Let us help. Find a way to be able to come with individual pieces within the communities. The civic leagues are gonna continue to come together. I hope and pray that tomorrow when the rains come through, we don't have flooding, the septic systems are not backed up into sinks, okay? And that we can find a way for those connection fees as well. Any answers that you have, any promotional information out there, does display itself as communication with the communities early, not once the plan is already hatched and maybe there were things that were tried in the past. And then that's what has reached a point of consensus and assistance in Eclipse with trying to get to that stormwater pond that we have on Eclipse Drive, coming in and out. And I just wanna continue to reverberate from all the communities. We're here together, and it is really the best city, but we have to find that balance where there hasn't been the balance before. And I thank you. And thank you for all your time and dedication of services and that of the people who've come forward to look for solutions. And good night.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, we'll now move to new business. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
The following individuals have been nominated for appointment to the respective boards and commissions: the Paul D. Camp Community College Board, Marcus Gerbosh; the Sister Cities Commission, Deborah Harris Austin; and Susan Blair.
Motion is in order. What's the pleasure of council? Vice Mayor Bennett?
Move for approval.
And let's see, we had a second by Councilman Fawcett?
To approve. Second is motion to give.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Is there any other new business items that require the action of the city council for consideration? Councilperson Butler-Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to direct the city managers, city manager Moore and staff to review and provide recommendations regarding Section 31-612(c)(3) and (F)(8) of the Unified Development Ordinance.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Councilman Johnson?
I'd like to second that motion, please.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? Councilman Goldberg?
Explanation, please, of that purpose?
Yes.
Absolutely.
In the UDO, there's a section that provides that a private street intended to serve 25 or more lots or parcels shall provide at least two access connections to a public street and shall meet the minimum design requirements for the public streets. In the section that I've asked to be reviewed, it allows the potential to go around this ordinance of 25 or less lots on a cul-de-sac. And I think for the first part, we should have the UDO agree with itself throughout the document. And I think that this is a safety issue. Access for emergency and fire and rescue on a cul-de-sac with only one ingress and egress is a safety issue that we don't need to have existing anywhere in the city. And again, I just would like to use staff and city manager to review this to make sure that we don't have workarounds that get around this 25 or more, excuse me, 25 or less parcels on a cul-de-sac.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to let you know I do not support this in any fashion. I think it's separating the whole UDO. I think if we're gonna do something, let's look at the entire UDO. I'm not about to vote on something that might turn into a lawsuit against the city, and I will not support it at this time.
Any further discussion of the motion, Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. I'm kind of perplexed by this motion. The UDO has been in this city for, somebody give me the year, it's been here since, what, '98? And from '98 till now, this one specific piece of this UDO has never been addressed. And now, there appears to have, this has a little bit of a stink to it, that this now is going to be cherry picked out of the UDO to be looked at and have a report brought back, which without a doubt is going to affect probably most people that want to come and invest in our city and do business in our city. And are we sending a message now that we're gonna cherry pick the UDO? What should be done is the UDO, this particular item and other items, there is many issues in the UDO that need to be looked at, should be looked at at the time and we get ready to review, which we are getting ready to review the UDO. So I'm just a little bit taken back by the fact that I believe this is directed probably specific to a community, to a developer. And I do not think that this is the appropriate measure and way to go about it. I think that if you want to review the UDO, let's review the UDO in total and complete. Now, we haven't cherry picked many things out of the UDO since I've been up here in my three terms. But tonight, we want to go and have the staff delve into one piece of this because someone thinks it's a safety issue. And I don't know what the safety issue is, and I would need somebody to really sit down and define the safety issue because we have many cul-de-sacs in our city. We've had to take some of these cul-de-sacs, and there has been some issues where they wanted to put planters in the middle of the cul-de-sacs and so on and so forth, and that made it a safety hazard. But to use this as a tool, under the omission of somebody on this council, to defer a developer to be able to put on a piece of property... to be able to put on a piece of property that is a by-right development, to use this as a tool to possibly kill his project, when little do they know that he can still put his project in there in the event that this council decides to come back and cherry-pick the UDO. Now, the Builders Association is not happy. I've gotten calls today like you would not believe about this. And I will not cherry-pick the UDO and come out here and want to change one piece to suit a specific community because they want to block a developer from being able, on the rightful owner of the property, to be able to build. That's furthest from what this council's ever done. We've never really, really, unless it's really out there, way out, have we ever denied a developer that met the criteria to build on his property, regardless if it's one house or 10 houses or whatever. So, this developer wants to build 14 houses, but he's going to get handicapped because of trying to find a loophole to pull it out on the cherry picker of the UDO, because he's not going to build 25. He's going to be less than 25. So, he can go back in and redesign. He's got two options. So, if you think you're going to make it harder on him because you're going to do this, then you're fooling yourself. Because I'll fully support the developer that's going in there to build on his property, because he's meant to do diligence to get it done. So, I will not vote in favor tonight of sending this to the city manager for review. It's not fair, and nobody in here, if they had a piece of property, would want to be put in this situation. You spent $150,000 doing a few things, and you want to throw him under the rug. Nope, it's not going to happen. So, therefore, I'm done with it. I will not be in favor of this motion.
Councilman Johnson?
I kind of thought I was sitting on council for a different reason than Mr. Fawcett, evidently, because I think we sit on council so that we show the people of this city that the UDO, for what it is, has some flaws in it. We all know it has flaws in it. When we detect a flaw, it's our responsibility as council members to ask the city manager to review it, and let's find out what the flaw is and why it's there. I respect developers as well. I mean, I live in a rural part of the city that I'm not as pro-development as some of the other council members. But I respect developers and appreciate the investments they're making in our cities, and they, as well as us, should be concerned if there's something in the UDO that allows them to do something that other people cannot do. I have a safety issue with this as well. Now, whether it's right or wrong, that's not, we need to give it to our staff and let them take a hard look at it and see if it's something that was put incorrectly in the UDO. I don't, I don't, Ms. Barlow did not bring this forward for any other reason than she thought it was wrong, and I respect that. If any member of this council bought for something like this, I would agree with them to go forward. I'm a little disturbed. All we're asking staff to do, take a look at it, find out if it does what it was designed to do, and that's to protect the developments, to protect the people that live in these developments. We all, I truly think it is time to take a hard look at the UDO and make sure it provides for the best interest of our city. And I've thought that for a long time. But for, to say we're cherry-picking, we're not cherry-picking. When you find a flaw, you try to fix it. I mean, what else are we sitting up here for, guys? Come on. But at any rate, I do, I do respect what she's saying, and whether she's right or wrong, that's irrelevant. I think the city needs to take a hard look at it and see if this is the right way for this to go. So, I support it.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you. I'll just have a couple of comments on this. The only thing that I have a big concern is setting precedents. If we are, I know every five years, we usually go back and review the UDO, and that council and planning commission and all get a chance to review and make recommendations for amendments. But, so I just have concerns when we start setting precedents where in that we will be any time coming up, making one, you know, without the proper time to do changes, to make changes. So, I just have some concern about setting the precedent of changing it just before you get ready to start doing a review. So, we are getting ready for a review, I think, in this year. Am I correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
So, that's what I'm saying. So, if we're going to be reviewing it anyway, we shouldn't be in a rush into pushing this until we get the full review and get the input from the others as well. So, that's just my comment.
Do we have any other comments? If not, I'd like to weigh in for a second, and my first question would be directed to the city attorney. And I'm very familiar with the catalyst behind the request that Councilperson Butler Barlow is making. And in regards to the developer at this point, would they, if the ordinance was changed before his final site approval, would it affect his ability? Would he have, in other words, it doesn't seem to me that this could be retroactive. Would he have to adhere to the amendment to the UDO? Or because he's already started the process, would he be exempt from any new ordinance that, any new amendment that we made to the UDO?
It depends on where in the process this application is, and I'm not sure I know enough about where it is to say whether or not, what, whether it's what exists today or what may exist when we pass it. It just depends on where that particular developer is in the process.
From my standpoint, I think--
And if I may add one other thing--
Go ahead, yes, absolutely.
City council does also have the authority to set when, so it doesn't have to immediately apply to everyone. So, if there is some question about whether or not it applies to one developer or another, or a number of developers that are already in the process, city council has the authority to say, this is going to start, but everyone who is in X, Y, or Z stage is grandfathered under the old provisions. So, you don't have to necessarily say this is the date that applies to everyone. You can grandfather people who are within the process. But city council would need to take that action.
Okay, so if we follow, if we indeed approved the motion that Councilperson Butler Barlow made to have staff prepare a change to the UDO, which would, in essence, correct a loophole, because I looked into this six, seven, eight months ago, and actually, it was, in the way it was described to me from your offices, it was not the intent of the UDO. And the UDO is a living document that could be changed whenever we want to change it, and normally, we're kind of reactive. You know, we have a problem, and then we decide to change it. So, if the latitude is there to allow the developer that is currently, anyone who's already submitted plans or whatever it is, that they would be grandfathered and not be subject to this, then I could agree with it, because it's just like Councilman Fawcett stated, and Councilman Goldberg, you know, we can't change the rules in the middle of a process if, if those who come to our city are dotting the i's, crossing the t's, going through the process, expending their resources to invest in our city, we can't put ourselves in a position where, oh, you're halfway through, we're going to change the rules. So, while I don't agree with that, it is also quite obvious that we do need to amend the UDO to preclude this from happening again, because it is a loophole that is essentially allowing someone to tie into a cul-de-sac with a limited number of houses and create another separate development with another set of houses, where in actuality, they're one in the same, they're connected. So, it's creating the issue. So, if we have the latitude to, at the time it's brought back, to either grandfather those who have already applied or have an effective date, a particular time, would that be correct? Also, we could have effective whenever we want it to be effective?
Yes, but can I clarify one thing about the process? So, the process that the city generally follows for modifying or amending the UDO is that city council directs the planning commission to look at a particular issue, and the planning commission has a, has a committee that looks at code sections and then proposes changes, and they provide recommendations to city council. It really wouldn't be the proper process for the city manager or city staff to come back with an amendment, because it would still have to go through that process, because we, with the, what we've done with the UDO is, we've mixed zoning and subdivision together. So, we need to follow the rules for changing the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance requires it to go to the planning commission for public hearing. A recommendation comes to city council, and city council holds a public hearing, and then the code is amended. So, the really, city staff looking at it, it's not going to make a change effective. It's going to have to, city staff can provide you with a report of what they may see as a problem, but city council has to direct this back to the planning commission for them to make recommendations.
So, with the ultimate goal being to amend the UDO, to basically close a loophole, then you're saying the proper process would be to make a motion to refer it to the planning commission?
For them to study the issue.
For them to study--
They may come back with a recommendation that they've looked at the UDO and they don't see an issue, and city council isn't necessarily to agree with that recommendation. But that is the process, is for the planning commission to review it and, and tell city council what they feel should or should not be changed in the UDO.
So, if Councilperson Butler Barlow would amend her motion to address this, to send it to the planning commission to review for an amendment, or how would, how would you go about wording that motion?
It depends what the purpose is. If the purpose is for the manager to look at this and let city council know whether or not there's an issue for planning commission to look at, then the motion doesn't need to be changed. If the intention is for there to be an amendment proposed to city council, then yes, it needs to be changed to refer this item to the planning commission.
So, it's, so at this point, it would be up to Councilperson Butler Barlow, whether she wanted to stay with her original motion, to have the city manager look at it to see if it should be referred to planning commission, planning commission, or change the motion to defer it to the planning commission?
Yes, sir.
Which would be different? Then it would go, we would start the process by deferring it to the planning commission. The planning commission would come back with a recommendation, and then it would be presented with a public hearing, and we would decide whether to change it?
Yes.
So, what is your preference, Councilperson Butler Barlow? I'm sorry? I get you hooked up.
You have to light--
Let me turn you on. Okay, I didn't mean it that way. Now I get you turned on.
May I ask a question?
Yep, hold on one second. I'm sorry, Councilman Ward has a question?
Does it have to go through the planning commission both ways, or what? Have to go through the city manager, do it have to go to the planning commission?
I think the way it was explained from the city attorney, that the process is to go through the planning commission, I think it would go that way anyhow. It has to go to the planning commission in order for an amendment. So, you're skipping a process by sending it to the planning commission first?
Is that me?
Got you.
Okay, so, I would like to amend my motion to direct it to planning commission.
Do we amend the motion? Do we have a second? Councilman Johnson?
We have a second.
We have a first and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I don't, I don't consider this a loophole. This has been in the process. It affects other, it can affect other developers in the city, but I know this was designed just to stop one. I was even told that. It was designed to stop just one. And how do you call it a loophole, and for the cul-de-sac to be built, and you have property behind it that is zoned for residential? So, how do you stop that from being able to, to, you go land-lock it, so it can't be, can't be developed? And it's already approved for what it is? You've got to give an opportunity for a cul-de-sac, that's what it's built for, so that the next property can be built, and it's not the same developer and all of that. So, I take, I take opposition to that, and I still will not support it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Bennett?
Just one comment, kind of referring back to what Councilman Goldberg was saying. If you go over into Patriot Walk, in the cul-de-sacs over there, already you have houses being built behind houses over in Patriot Walk. So, I don't know what the changes would be different to stop from going into the back, because it's being done. If you ride through Patriot Walk, you can see houses being built in the back of other houses in the cul-de-sac already, so I don't, I don't see what the difference is with that.
Councilperson Butler Barlow?
I just want to make one other comment. I think the intention of this is to ask developers that are coming into the city of Suffolk to abide by the rules set forth in the UDO across the city, no matter where the development is occurring, and to do it in a responsible manner according to the UDO and not look for ways around the rules in the UDO. And I'm saying this for, you know, anyone doing business in the city of Suffolk, we're asking them to follow the rules that we've set forth, not just one particular case. So, just wanted to make that clear.
Councilman Fawcett?
I just have an exception to that comment, because the UDO is a living document, it is a rule. And therefore, I'm not sure that the planning, uh, planning department, or the planning commission down to the planning department, vice versa, is allowing something to take place that doesn't conform to what the UDO says.
It doesn't conform.
So, if it conforms, then they're not doing anything to not follow the rules. If you, I'll go back to my colleague, Mr. Goldberg. You go in to this particular one he just talked about, and you cut this cul-de-sac, which is a temporary piece to begin with, you've cut any means for an adjacent property to be able to be used for whatever the Birdsong's who own it have an opportunity to use. So, I'm sure they're going to be real happy about it in the event, one day, they want to try to do something with it. So, I think we need to be careful what we're doing here. I don't mind changing something for the benefit of, the betterment of our city, but we're doing midstream stuff here, and I'm going to go right back to it and talk about what you think. Yes, I'm up here, and I take exception to the fact that one of my councilmen thinks that I'm not up here for the betterment of the city. On what I had to say is, if you want to do it, do it in the right way. Do it during the time that the UDO is being revamped. Make your changes, they'll go through a process, where council, planning, and everybody's involved, and then everybody gets a piece of it. But you can call it what you want to. There's a motivation behind this, and I am not going to sit here and cherry-pick this any kind of way, shape, or form, period.
Is there any other discussion? I think we have a motion, and we have a second. And the motion, I believe, Madam Clerk is made, was to refer this issue to the planning commission for a recommendation?
That is my understanding, but I would defer to the maker of the motion to verify.
Yeah, for us to, for us to consider, you know, their recommendation in an amendment to the UDO. Does that sound right? Okay, then at that time, we will take into consideration their recommendation, and then we will or will not make the amendment to the UDO, and when it will be effective, and whether it will affect anyone at all who's in the process now, which I would not be in favor of, because I don't like changing-- in favor of because I don't like changing rules in the middle of the game either. But we do not have, as long as I've been on council, and I just want to correct this, we have never had a comprehensive review of the U D O. I am a strong advocate for doing a comprehensive review of the U D O. This is a document that's 25 years old, is that about right? 20, 25 years old? Thereabouts, but we haven't had a comprehensive review and our city has changed immeasurably since its inception. And then once we do that, I would also advocate for a set periodic review of the U D O, possibly every two or three years, where the public can weigh in, our staff can weigh in and the development community to weigh in, to address any issues that they've had to deal with or address any issues that they may feel will be a problem down the road so we can stay up with it, you know? But we are, you know, whether we consider a loophole or not, in, I think we're getting a little confused and maybe when it comes back, we'll get a better explanation. We're not talking about cul-de-sacs per se, but it's how the cul-de-sac is being used and what it creates and what the intent of the U D O was with, which is, if I, if I understand it, I mean, a development that is allowed with the U D O is a restricted development because it gets away from the normal ingress and egress that a, a larger development would be required to do. And so what is, what needs to be fixed is the option to tie into an existing cul-de-sac, which the intent was to have a limited number of homes on it and tie into another one and then by calling that a separate development, allowing that to happen. And I'm just trying to put it in layman's terms, but something like that. So I don't, I don't personally think there's any harm in doing what we're doing. I think if we see something that's not working, regardless of what it is, we need to bring it up and we can change it. The U D O is a, a living document, but at the same time, I am not ever going to be a proponent for changing the rules in midstream. When people check, when people plan on developing in, in, in our city and they, and they have, are going through the process in the right way, then if we don't like what's happened and we need to change it for the next person, not the one that's already come in and, and has a plan. So with that being said, we have a first and we have a second. So at this time, I'll ask everybody to prepare to vote.
I have one comment, Mayor.
Uh, we, Vice Mayor's got one more, you're one over your limit, but we're going to let you go.
Well, this is going to be very brief because I, all the thing I wanted to say is that, I know I've been a part of the review of the U D O in past years, uh, since it's been written. I was here when it was done and I've been here a couple of times when we had the review and the planning commission went through the planning commission and the council. So it has been done before through the council with the overall review. I just wanted to say that because I, I was here.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we got a first, we got a second.
I have one on your topic.
Councilman Fawcett?
I like some of the, what you had referred to as, and the one thing that I'd like to make note of is we have had, over the period that I've been here, some things that have come before this council that were U D O issues that we didn't deal with at that particular time. We didn't go back and make an amendment to go and fish it out and fix it then because it was always going to be that we were going to do it during the review process. So I, I, I get where you just were coming from and I appreciate the fact that you said you wouldn't, you wouldn't support a change in midstream and that this allows us an opportunity that even if the planning commission comes back, we can still establish a timeline or a grandfathering for anybody. So it gives us an opportunity there. I still don't, I'm still not changing my plan about going for this motion because I think it should be done during the time that the U D O is reviewed. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, we got a first, a second. Councilmembers, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of five to three with Vice Mayor Bennett, councilmembers Fawcett and councilmember Goldberg voting in opposition.
Okay, is there any other new business that's going to require action at city council? Councilman Fawcett?
Hopefully this won't be as bad as.
Hopefully.
I'd like to make a motion to move the city attorney to direct him to draft an ordinance to amend section two dash four zero of the city code to provide city council mayor salary compensations at the amount provided in the code of Virginia and to allow the city council mayor members to opt in or out of the health insurance provided to the city employees.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Councilman Ward?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one with Vice Mayor Bennett voting in opposition.
Okay, do we have any other new business that needs to be brought before the council for a vote? That concludes our new business. We'll now move forward to announcements and comments and at this time, I'll ask our assistant director of media and community relations, Tim Kelly, to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Suffolk Fire and Rescue EMS recently received the Outstanding EMS Agency Award from the Tidewater Emergency Medical Services Council. Suffolk Fire and Rescue, like many other regional departments, faced one of the toughest challenges in the spring of 2020. As the grips of the COVID-19 pandemic were taking hold on the city, a critical shortage of personal protective equipment would soon leave the men and women of Suffolk Fire and Rescue without a means to protect themselves from the ravages of this deadly disease. Suffolk Fire and Rescue asked for the assistance of the very citizens they serve, which led to a heartfelt and humbling experience as the community answered the call by providing supplies along with messages of support. The department also assigned a procurement officer to relentlessly search for any available equipment across the nation that met the necessary standards for personal protection. Additionally, the department partnered with local businesses and agencies to supply and even manufacture components of personal protective equipment that could not be procured by other means. Suffolk firefighters and fire academy recruits also assisted Western Tidewater Health District workers in providing onsite testing at drive-through testing locations. In partnership with Meals on Wheels, personnel also provided in-home vaccinations for those elderly citizens unable to reach a clinic. These are but a few examples of Suffolk Fire and Rescue's commitment to its community and its providers, who never fail to answer the call with professionalism and compassion. Suffolk has shown that it stands by its motto, "Our family protecting yours." Hydrostructures, a contractor working on behalf of the Suffolk Department of Public Utilities, will be smoke testing the sanitary sewer system over the next five weeks within various areas of the city. All areas scheduled to be smoke tested will be notified with door hangers that describe the upcoming smoke testing efforts. Now, smoke testing involves injecting opaque colored smoke through sanitary sewer pipes to locate and identify deficiencies that may contribute to sanitary sewer overflows. Smoke is used, smoke used for smoke testing is non-toxic, harmless and creates no hazard. The testing starts the week of July 12th. To find out more on the specific areas to be tested and the testing schedules, you can visit the project website at the URL shown on the screen. Commissioner of Revenue Susan Draper and our office are offering two drive-through high mileage adjustment events. If you own a passenger car, a light duty truck that has over 15,000 miles per year, you may, you may be eligible for reduction in your car tax. The first event will be held on Wednesday, July 14th from three to seven P M. That'll be in the parking lot at the North Suffolk Library. The second event will be held on Wednesday, July 28th at City Hall. For additional information, you can contact the Commissioner of Revenue's office. As a reminder, free mosquito dunks are available to Suffolk residents at fire stations, libraries, recreation centers, city hall and the visitor center. Mosquito dunks are a biological pesticide that kill mosquito larvae or young mosquitoes that live in stagnant water. You can place mosquito dunks in stagnant water ponds, ditches or containers such as bird baths. The dunks will be effective for about a month. Residents can get one free pack each month. You just need to provide a Suffolk ID for that. And again, we remind you, the Suffolk Health Department, the Virginia Department of Health, referencing the website here, vaccinefinder.org or www.vaccinatevirginia.gov if you're looking for assistance in locating where you can get vaccinated. Or if you have questions about the vaccination process, you can call the state call center at 1-877-VAX-NVA. And we leave you with the ways we reach out to our residents and business owners. Again, 514-4000 the number to call if you'd like to get connected with city services or speak to city staff. We can get you directed and hopefully get answers to the questions you may have. With that, say good evening.
We will now move on to announcements from city council. We're going to start with Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be very brief. First, I would like to thank all my fellow councilmembers for the job that you do. You were elected by your constituencies. They put you here to make the right decisions. I applaud you, each and every one of you, for the positions that you, you take. So with that said, on Friday, July the 2nd, I had the honor of attending now the Honorable Judge Hellebuy Hollins' investiture. This was a great event and I honestly have never seen that many judges at one time. It was, I'm, I'm telling you, it was just a great event. I just would like to congratulate Judge Hollin and with that, I'd like to say goodnight.
Wait, Councilman Goldberg?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, uh, I had the pleasure of attending two really events for the, some women of Suffolk and both of them were well deserved and I had to agree with Councilman Williams. I'd never seen that many judges before and I thought the event was put on well and I knew a couple of judges, but it was an eye-opener and I even wish that they can video that. And so some of the, the children in school or what we've seen and how many judges and all the judges that attend that event. And my congratulations go to Ms. Judge Hollin, Hellebuy Hollin, and also her mother, Lula Hollin. I think that was a proud day in both their life and a proud day for the city of Suffolk. So I thank, thank her for doing such a great job in her life and her mother being the backbone of what's, her father, but her mother being the backbone of where she at now, I think. But the second one, I attended a couple of other councilmen's were there too. Sylvia Copeland Murphy, uh, she is, uh, one of the people that, you know, that you, when you get to know her, it's, it's a pleasure to know her and her family. Ms. Murphy is a pastor. She's been in the ministry 27 years. In the ministry 19 years as assistant pastor for Old Grove Baptist Church, one of our great churches in the city of Suffolk. She's been 25 years of women fellowship ministry. She's been doing a great job in this city of Suffolk. She also wait for Congressman Don McKish. So I'd like to congratulate Ms. Murphy, a, a life well served and well, especially in, in the eyes of the Lord. You have done a great job and I have watched you over the years. And I want to say this here, I want to give kudos to Ms. Evelyn Copeland, that's the mother of Ms. Murphy and also the mother of a couple of the, one of the women who works in this, this for the city and, but that's the mother of Anthony Copeland, one of the big pastors in the city of Suffolk. They have done so well, you know, like I said to them, I think I model them as one of the model families in this city of Suffolk that are always giving back to the community. So I thank Ms. Evelyn Copeland for being the backbone of that family and doing such a great job and for the city of Suffolk. Al, if you can, if any possible way that Ms. White came up here and she put some type of numbers together and some of the ones that she said that, that the city is supposed to have done this and that, would you give me a little information about that? I know some of the C I P, some of the work we have done, some of the work that we have gave money to. I'd just like to see a couple of things that, some of the, what we have done, part, parts of the city, the C I P, the money that we have gave in different areas for the city of Suffolk, especially in the flooding. I'm not too familiar with the, the park 2001, but I'd like to just look at some of that information she talked about and because that's a long time and I just want to see what can be done on some of the things that she talked about. So if you can do that, I, I really appreciate that. Like I said, I don't, you know, I, I, oh, let me, I forgot that. I also attended a town hall meeting in Chukla, Chupatuck and Ms. Barlow, the councilman, I mean, the mayor, I attend that. And what impressed me always is the attendance that's there. And we got to consider that the people that, they did come, it was well attended, they had some good concerns and I just hope that we can address some of them concerns about them communities. It wasn't just one community, it was several communities. And one of the big things they do talk about is flooding. So like I said, I, you know, I enjoy it and I enjoy the attendance and maybe we can get together and do some of the things we said, possibilities earlier at workshop and just let them know that we here. With that, I'll say God bless.
Councilperson Butler Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say I appreciate everyone's statements this evening and the opinions and the discussion and from my point of view, that's why we're here, to look at things and make sure we're doing everything as best as we can for the citizens of Suffolk. So thanks for everybody's input. I'd like to talk a little bit about the town hall meeting that we had on June 28th. Appreciation to the Greater Chuklin, Greater Oakland Chuk-Tuck Civic League and the other civic leagues for requesting that meeting and for getting the word out. We had around 120 people. We were there for two hours. We were at Oakland Elementary, so thanks to Parks and Rec for providing that facility and the air conditioning sort of worked, so it was a hot evening, but everyone, we had, we had good, good even tempers and good discussion. Appreciate the city manager for planning, the attendance by the mayor and vice mayor and councilman Ward. And I would, I really would like to thank each and every staff member and city employee that was there, but if I start listing all of them, I'll miss somebody and there was a lot. But I, I really appreciate the effort that staff and city manager put into that meeting. I thought it went really well. Again, we were there for two hours. I thought we had some good exchange of ideas and I'm excited about the prospect of using some of the American Rescue Plan funding to address some of the issues that we had discussions about that night. So thanks again to everybody that was involved and to Chandler. I try to lock my car, but I just, I forget. Chief Chandler told us to lock our cars, lock our cars, lock our cars, yeah. But anyway, thank you for, for everyone for the planning and the attendance of that event. I also would like to just, I know we've, we're past the Fourth of July, but the city offered a lot of great opportunities to celebrate the Fourth and it was a wonderful experience to be out in public and with other people when we weren't allowed to do that last year. I, for one, my grandson, my oldest grandson and I rode our bikes in the Kritten Eclipse parade on Saturday morning and it was great fun and I just hope that everyone had an opportunity to get out and do something fun over the Fourth weekend. It was a great break and a, a great holiday. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Councilman Johnson?
I'll be brief as well. Just, just talking about the Fourth of July weekend, I think that's why so many people moved to Suffolk is because we are such an intimate community and we have such wonderful things going on all over our city. And this year, particularly with my business, we've had so many new young people come out to see us, it's just unbelievable. And they all say the same thing, they're here because they want to be in Suffolk. And I guess my message there is that, yeah, we need to review the U D O and, and we don't need to put it off anymore. This is a year we need to do it. We need to take a hard look at lots of things and maybe we need to get the same group that's going to do our comprehensive plan to help us look. And maybe we need to get the same group that's going to do our comprehensive plan to help us look at the UDO. My point being that we've got to stop putting this stuff off. People are coming here because of this city, and we've got to preserve what we have. And in order to do that, we've got to form a kinsmanship with the developers. We've got to make everybody understand what we want our city to look like. I keep saying this. Nobody's out there to beat anybody up. But we need to put a plan forward that shows the rest of Tidewater what we are about, and this is what we want, and this is how we want our city to be. And that's, that's my reason for supporting anybody that has a problem with the UDO and the rules we put forward. Let's talk about it and change it if we need to change it. And since I've been on council six years, I have to disagree with some of these guys, because in my opinion, UDO problems have been brought before us. We haven't addressed them, and it is way past time. So that's my concern about this. I really think we need to do a hard review of the UDO, and I think this is the year to do it. One other thing, Hellebuye didn't get to her party. I wanted to be there, but I just couldn't because of my business. But we are so blessed in this city to have a woman like Hellebuye and her mother, Lula, because they are history for our city. These are the people, there's lots more, but Hellebuye is one of those people that's going to go down in history for what she's done for Suffolk and what she's done for the state. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it. If anybody gets a chance to go back and look at the work session tonight, it would, it would probably pay you good values to do just that. We did hear some very good information on the American Rescue Plan. You know, it's, it's, I don't know whether people can wrap their head around this, but 15 million the first year, 15 the second year, 30 million. We just got done having the CARES Act of about 16 million. And you got to realize what these dollars do to take the pressure off of the daily operations of your CIP, your operating funds, so on and so forth, and the value that we can get from this. And going back and listening to it, you know, some of the things they want to do is, you know, something we've all complained about, water rates and sewer rates. You know, stormwater runoff. Something that came out of that that I saw was the Oakland area in Pewsville, Oakland getting drainage and water and sewer and, you know, instead of septic systems, they get these folks off the septic in Pewsville to do some more of the drainage things that we can do. So, you know, you think about this. If we didn't get the 15 million, we'd be struggling to do things at the tax rate we're doing. And if you want everything done, you got to be willing to afford to do it. And you don't, you can't attract people to come to your city if your tax rate is through the roof. So you got to be thinking that we're in a good spot to have 30 million being dropped on us in two years. That can, it's not going to take care of everything. It's not going to solve all the problems, but it's certainly going to help us in a lot of ways that will take the pressure off of us tax, so we don't have to raise the taxes next year or the year after. That's what we want to try to do, is to work with the funding so that we can live here and not have to pay, you know, the high tax rates you see in some of the other localities. And to get that water rate under control, this is maybe a good opportunity. You know, Mr. Manager and your group put that together to help maybe offset some of that. So, you know, I think our staff and our council here is, is trying to go in the right direction and use this funding very prudent so that we get the best mileage out of every dollar, because we don't get another chance at this. You know, we may never get another $30 million down the road. This is, the money's not going to keep dropping out of the sky like it seems to have been these last few years. So we just got to move forward and do the right thing. And, you know, we got a little storm coming tomorrow through the area, a little few winds, maybe some heavy rain. And Grant, when you drop three, four inches of rain on you at one time during this, you're going to have water rising somewhere. I don't care how well your drainage is, you're going to have some flooding. So you're going to have to deal with it, and I have to deal with it, and we all have to deal with it. So just keep in mind, it's going to blow through here and be gone 24 hours, it's be long gone. So just bear with it. You know, we're going to have some staff on hand in case things go wrong, Mr. Manager, correct? And so there's going to be people in places if things really start to happen. But I think relatively, this storm is nothing more than a good northeast blower, probably. Congratulations to the fire department. You know, I can't tell you enough about the firefighters in this city to get all these awards and recognition. And I want you to keep in mind that we have four guys right now down in Florida at that condo that dropped with probably almost 180 people or whatever was involved in that building. The massive undertaking that they're doing, you just can't even, you can't even wrap your head on it. If you watch it on TV, you're just getting a very small glimpse of what happens at a collapsed site. I've been there, done this. It's bucket by hand, bucket by bucket, to find those people that have perished in that building. And it would be only a miracle if they could find one more person in there. But who knows? It's in God's hands. But they are working like dogs down there, all the communities and firefighters around this country. And we've even got some men from out of the area, across the pond, came over to help us. These guys, every day, should be given a thank you, like our law enforcement. Not only the firefighters down there, but got police officers down there helping and doing things and protecting the site, and you have to have all those things. So I want to thank our firefighters that are down there. I want to thank our firefighters and police officers every day that are in this city that are trying to do all the things that happen. And we've had some terrible things happen in this city in the last few days, Chief Chandler. We've had a lot of shootings. And we have got to figure it out. We've got to find a way to get this craziness that's going on. We got to figure it out. We got a lot of young kids that are getting hurt, and we're lucky that we had more shot and dead than we've had. We've had some wounded, and they'll recover, but they'll never forget, I'm sure. So I want you and your personnel to do everything you can to figure this out, and try to step up and do everything to help try to bring this down a little bit. It's getting on the news like every night or every morning, and it's, it's almost like some of the other cities. And I hate, I'm not going to throw stones at them because they got their problems too, but it's just the times we're in, I guess, and we'll get there, hopefully. Susan Draper with the Commissioner's Office is, is giving you an opportunity to reduce your personal property on your vehicles if you're 15,000 miles or more. Take advantage of it. Go see her. Bring your information to her, and she'll drop that personal property down, which will help you, believe me. Take advantage of it. And again, everybody on here has probably said it, but Ms. Hellebuye Hollins' investiture as a judge was just spot on. It was a great ceremony. We had judges from all over the place, Virginia Supreme Court, the Appeals Court. All the appellate's around, we're all involved in it. The crowd was a good size. And, you know, it's, it should be a great feeling for Suffolk that one of their own has got promoted to a judgeship. It's, you know, you can take for what it's worth, to become a judge is, is pretty awesome. You don't get to see many people in their lives get to do that. So I congratulate her. I know she'll do a good job on the bench. I told her I was going to come by and critique her one day and see what she's up to. But with that, I thank each and every one of you tonight for your contribution, and I hope to see you on the 21st.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, and I'll take 20 minutes. All right, I would like to start out by saying, really, I attended a few things the weekend, and all of them was great. Ms. Sylvia Copeland Murphy, I've known her, I would say practically all of her life, and Assistant Pastor there at the Oak Grove Baptist Church. And I think she was well-deserved enough, her honor that they bestowed upon her on Sunday. And she's been a great community person, and she does a lot with young kids there at the church. I'm really impressed with the activities that she have with the young people there in that area, and she's doing an outstanding job. And also with her working for Congressman McKeach, and that give us a little bit more contact with his office here in the city. So she's working with him as well, and that she's always adding to the community, trying to improve things with that. Judge Hellebuye Hollin, and that's one I've known all of her life, and her father, and all, we used to work together, ride together. And she's a spinning image. If y'all want to know what her father looked like, and look at her. Lula, I know she's the mother, but she favors her dad more, she has more ways like a dad than she does her mom. But she had a great parents, and I know he's looking down on her and praying, we are praying that everything will continue to bless her and her family as she continues to take the responsibility that has been bestowed upon her. And she's the first female, and I want to say the first African-American from Suffolk that has been appointed judge here in the city that she was born in. She was born here in Suffolk, so, I mean, that's a great tool right there within itself. The fireworks on Sunday afternoon, evening down at Hilton, I went there with the grandbabies and all, and I'll tell you, I have not seen so many people. That was the largest crowd I believe that ever have, I've seen, seen downtown for the fireworks. And people were walking from all directions, bringing chairs and this and that. I mean, you couldn't hardly find a place to sit with your chairs and blankets down there at the Hilton. So I think that was a great experience. For a lot of people that was trying to get out of the house, I think that gave them something to do. It was outside, so there's a lot of people there. And quite a few of them are still wearing the mask as well. But that was a great, great affair. I want to say to our police and fire, I think you all have a tough role to hold with what's going on throughout the world, not just in Suffolk. We're just a little bit more blessed, I think, than some of the other areas. But police can't do everything. We got to do some of it at home, in our churches, in our community. Police are there to try, and they can't be there every time somebody pull a gun out and shoot. They can't be there every time somebody wreck a car. But they are there to serve whatever they can to try and prevent things from happening and being more community-oriented, where they are getting more familiar and knowing the people that they serve. So I cannot thank you all enough for what you all are doing and keeping the community informed about the police department and things that are taking place. And that they know when you're going to have extra police out there patrolling, so you're not trying to surprise anybody. You're giving plenty of time to realize Suffolk is alive and well. So I cannot say thank you enough for what all you all do each and every day. And I pray each and every day for your safety of all of you. And with that, I think, that's, that's all I had. That's all my notes, so I'll stop there. I'll stop right there. Thank you. I'm trying to get my 20 minutes in.
Yeah, I know. You still got a few. Still got a few. Well, there has been quite a lot that's gone on, because it's been three weeks since we've had our last meeting, and you combine that also with the July 4th and the ability for people to get out, so there's been a lot going on in our city. As Councilman Fawcett mentioned, I would suggest, if you did not look at the work session, I'm very excited about the $30 million that we're receiving from the American Rescue Plan Act. I would have liked it to have been 60 or 200 million like somebody, but I'm not going to give the 30 million back. I think the strategic plan to use that money is, is very well thought of, very prudent. It's going to have an immediate effect. We're going to address broadband issue. This will take care of our approximately $5 million to contribute to the regional broadband initiative that the other Hampton Road cities are in, which is huge. And then we'll have another $3 million to extend some broadband into some of the rural areas. 1.5 million for nonprofits to be used through an application process. And keep in mind that this money doesn't have to all be spent until 2026. And then the remaining $20,500,000 to be spent in unserved and underserved communities specifically as far as how it affects water and sewage. And a lot of that, hopefully, some of it will be money that would have been spent within our utility fund. And by relieving the fund of that debt service, it will allow us to mitigate water and sewer rate increases to the extent that that would have an effect. So, you know, I'm very excited about it and looking forward to the particulars. I'll go real quick just through some of the things that have gone on the last three weeks. A lot of them have been mentioned already. I did attend a prayer vigil at Lake Prince Woods that was sponsored by the Suffolk Clergy United. Went to Pewsville along with, the vice mayor was there, and I believe Councilman Ward was there, it seems like a long time ago, but that was June 19th. And they had a great turnout, and we discussed some issues that were going on in Pewsville. And I think Pewsville and a lot of these other areas are, are in a very good position right now to actually see some progress. And I know it's been a long time coming, but I'm just saying, just, just hold on and let us catch our breath and get everything working. And if you don't see something, you can ring me up and, you know, let me know about it. The Town Hall Meeting in Oakland-Chukatack, there were a lot of people there. We got a little off track for a while, but, you know, it was very, very well-attended. I appreciate the staff being there. The chief was there, and we had Public Works, Public Utilities, we had Planning, we had the city manager, we had Parks and Rec. Who'd I leave out? We had Planning, did I say Planning? Community Development. We had everybody there. And as Councilperson Butler-Burlough said, it went on for about two hours. It probably could have gone on for another two hours. So, you know, we're looking, you know, it, a lot of it was the same message, and now people are looking for results, so it's up to us to do what we can. We got the message. Trust me, we got the message. It's just up to us to try to make something happen now. Hellebuye Hollins' investiture, and I don't know who said it, somebody said they've never seen that many judges in one place at one time. It's a little scary, but I got up enough nerve, and I was going to go up to every single one of them and see if I could get one Get Out of Jail Free card from each one of them. And in my age, I figured I'd be covered, but I was only able to get two or three. The parade in Eclipse, July 4th, I mean, it was great. And it just, it went down without a hitch, and just the whole atmosphere, the community involvement. I want to thank Fire and Rescue Police Department. They did a great job. Everybody did. It was probably, and I've been to quite a few, but that was probably the smoothest one. I mean, we didn't have a hiccup. I mean, last year we didn't have it, but the year before that was like 110 degrees, and my car overheated, and the traffic was stopped, and this was, this was just the breeze. Everybody carried on. So it's, it's just nice to be able to get back out there together. The Commissioner of Revenue, this is a pretty good, big deal, and I'm going to tell you why it's a big deal. I'm in the car business. So being in the car business, I know what's happening to car values right now. Your personal property taxes are going to be based on the book value of your car. Do not get excited if you see that that number may be higher than it was last year, because a lot of cars have actually appreciated in value as much as 25 or 30% over the last year. That's insane, but it has. Who would ever think that a pre-owned car would go up? So take advantage of your mileage. So when they say 15,000 miles, is if you average more than, you know, if your car's two years old and has more than 30,000, be there. If it's three years old, has more than 45, be there. If it's four years old, be there, because there will be a mileage deduction that will come off the value of the car, and you will pay less taxes. So, you know, Ms. Draper's put it out there. They got two events. Try to take advantage of it. If you got, if, well, I won't say you could call me, but I'd be glad to let anybody know if they, if the mileage affects their car much. Nazment River High School softball team, state champions. And maybe we got another state champion right here at home. I mean, it doesn't sound like much, but there's a lot of schools in the state of Virginia. And to get through a state championship, my hats are off to them. I like to try to bring some good stuff forward. We talked about Ms. Draper, the, our Fire and Rescue people that are going to Florida. Chief Demetri Wilson, Lieutenant Ben Brower, medic firefighter Travis Pierce. Godspeed. I mean, I can only imagine what's going on down there. I mean, I can only imagine what's going on down there, you know, with as long as it's been and just watching some of the films with, you know, what's going on and what they have to do, just basically do recovery work right now. So the fact that we're sending somebody down there, once again, just kind of shows what we're about. I'm going to read a piece of a letter to the editor that was sent in in regards to our police department and our fire and safety. It was sent in by R.J. Judy. "I would like to sincerely thank Suffolk Police and Suffolk Fire and Rescue Departments for coming to my aid on January, on Saturday, May first, two thousand and twenty-one." And basically he was unloading his trailer and it fell on his knees and it fell on his leg and his wife heard him, she called nine-one-one. I'll go back to the quote, "Literally, within minutes, members of the Suffolk Police and Fire and Rescue Personnel arrived and began to evaluate the situation and plan how they could extract me from beneath the tractor, all the while assuming the worst as far as injuries concerned. They were calm and professional at all times. It was obvious they were well-trained. Within approximately ten to fifteen minutes after their arrival, I was put in ambulance and carried to Centerra Norfolk General Hospital, emergency room for crush trauma evaluation." And I'll skip over a couple paragraphs. "I don't know the names of the men and women of the Suffolk Police and Fire Department, Station One and Four, the medical technicians or the ambulance driver. I just want folks to know that based on this experience. I am proud and most thankful for the dedication and knowledge of all these men and women exhibited. Hopefully, none of you will have a need for them to come to your rescue, but if you do, rest assured they're ready and able." Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief, both Chiefs. So, you know, congratulations on a job well done and y'all mentioned it before, you know, it's kind of like my business, you know, people that have a problem have a lot more tendency to squeak than the ones that get good service. You hear them for maybe one out of ten. So it's nice that, you know, you get the recognition that you need and that you deserve. So with that being said, I'm going to move to my quote of the night. And my quote of the night is actually from the prayer vigil that I attended at Lake Prince Woods, Suffolk Clergy United on June eighteenth. And it's a quote from Gary Newsom, Director of Spiritual Life at Lake Prince Woods. And that is, and I quote, "We want to show that all people matter and through prayer and unity, we can change things." And probably one of the better quotes I've come up with and it was right here in Suffolk. So with that, if there's no further business, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. And we have Councilman Fawcett.
So moved.
And it's Councilman Ward.
Second.
Second from Councilman Ward. Any discussion? If not, please prepare to vote. Please vote. Benham Clerk, please record to vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting is now adjourned. Yes.